Good evening. It looks like everybody's having fun here on this bench. I want to welcome everyone to the Lee County Board of Education meeting today on Tuesday, October 9, 2018. At this time, I want us to have a moment of silence with a prayer from Mrs. Livingston, if you will.
Devoutly Father, we come to you, Almighty in Ohio. Thank you for this meeting that we're having this evening. Bless all of us who are here. Pray for the county, the country, and all of those who are without Christ and those who are trying to follow Christ, Father. Bless this meeting that we will all be cordial and be in unity according to what the will is of Department of Public Instructions. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent will lead us on that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public comment. Ms. Lisa Reagan. You have three minutes.
Hello, Lisa Reagan of Sanford, 2624 Laney Drive. Still waiting on instructions for an acceptable grievance format for regular grievance as well as harassment grievance. Still waiting on First Amendment training processes too further as have been in conversations and meetings with Mr. Andy Bryan about who stopped it at the end of last year and has not resumed yet. Still waiting on that. I will be placing another public information request for answers concerning the questions that Ms. Womack shared on her Facebook website for the school board concerning the walkout of March of this year. And also, I would like to address that I was harassed in the Heinz Educational Building and I asked for the video footage. There is a camera there, but evidently the camera only shows still shots, still pictures. So it does not give light to what happened to me in front of my daughter. And so, however, I think the safety of everybody would be greatly improved if the cameras were replaced with something that actually shows video and audio. Thank you.
At this time, we'll read the vision of Lee County Schools.
Vision statement. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you, Mr. Cobble. At this time, we want a motion for the approval of the agenda of 10/9/2018.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the agenda of 10/9/2018.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next one is approval of the minute of 9/11/2018.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the minutes of 9/11/2018.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved, too. At this time, we're just going to have the Chairman's report. We have so much that's been going on since the last meeting that we had. And I just want to thank all of our staff and everyone for all that they have been doing to get the school back to normal after the hurricane. And so grateful for what everybody is doing and all the staff that help Betsy Bridges and all of those staff and want to say thank you. And Superintendent, too, because I was keeping up with what was going on for the fact that I didn't have life power myself. But at the same time, you have a responsibility to take care of. So I want to say thank you to all of you. This time also, we still have the School Board Association meeting that we have to go in November. So if you want to go, we will take your name and send you to the School Board Association Annual Conference in Greensboro. So this is for the Board of Education members, not to the audience. Also, I want to also recognize the new Principal of the Year, Chris Dussenberg. So our congratulation goes to him for what he's doing in our school and all of those people that have been able to do that. So my next item is I'm going to call two people forward and I want to recognize them for what they are doing. Number one is Jennifer Allen. I want you to come forward. And the second person is Jolanda Jordan. I just want to say a few things before I proceed to give you a little recognition. I want to recognize both of you for what you're doing. At this time, all the time, we bring other principals here to recognize what they are doing. But from my heart, as the Chair of the School Board, I want to say thank you for what you're doing. I know you're doing a difficult work over there. I've been to different, your schools at different times. And we know it's very difficult to even keep the kids in your school just in place. And the parents that I run into all the time tell me that they appreciate that. And I think on behalf of the Board, I think it behooves the Board to recognize what both of you are doing. And I want to say thank you for the extra effort. You know, when we're looking at other schools, we can see, this is where they move, this is what they have done, this is what they have done. But you know, we are giving you guys responsibility that's very, very hard. And we want just to say thank you. You know, we might be recognizing other people and clapping for the big grades they got, but you guys are doing the extra effort. And without complaining, when I visit your schools, you guys are always doing the job with smiles on your face and commanding the kids. And I just want to say, on behalf of Lee County Board of Education, I just want to give both of you a little recognition here. And afterwards, we will come and take pictures with you. Jolanda Jordan. Jennifer Allen, thank you. So on behalf of the Board, I want to say thank you to you. Yes. Let's take pictures with them. Oh, you want to?
The Chair having issues today. So if I fall on the floor, y'all, is the Chair hurt? Well, would you bring something, just, you know, make you feel better?
Thank you.
I don't like this. I'm a tall person. In person, I think.
That's all right. I'm not supposed to be here.
Congratulations. It's like easy guys. So. Special kids, special you. Act like you like each other. Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward, please, toward the Clean School of the Month.
Thank you. Our schools are happy schools, they're psych schools, and they're clean schools. This month, or in September, all of our schools scored over ninety percent as far as their grades performance. We had three schools that scored ninety-eight, and we had two schools that scored ninety-seven, and our lowest was ninety-six.
Dr. Waller, speak into the microphone. I think they're telling you, you're too quiet back there.
And the winner this month is Floyd Knight. And they had a score of ninety-nine.
Sorry, I'm speechless from a while ago. That don't happen often. But our team works really hard to make our school ready and open for kids to learn. So thank you for the recognition. We really appreciate it, and we will hang on to this for some time.
Congratulations, Jennifer, and to Floyd Knight and the staff there. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Extra Effort Award. As everyone knows, our county had a difficult time with the hurricane, Florence coming through. Certainly grateful that it wasn't as difficult as some other areas to the east of us, but at the same time, very difficult. And as many of you know, when we have an issue like that, particularly with hurricanes or natural disasters, we have an agreement with the county to open up a shelter. And our shelter location is located at Sandley Middle School. And part of that agreement is that we will administratively staff that site. And our principal there, Betsy Bridges, was instrumental, not only in everything we were trying to do as a school district and sort of shutting down for the week with her own school at Sandley Middle School, but also, at the same time, she was also, as she was transitioning from getting everybody home from Sandley Middle School, she was transitioning to helping set the shelter up at Sandley. And then ended up helping demand that shelter throughout the weekend. I didn't count all the hours, but it was several, several days that Betsy was there. And sort of the feedback we received from all the great staff members who were there from Red Cross and the County Office and Health Department and Sheriff's Department and all the other many people, volunteers that were there, was how instrumental Betsy was in sort of organizing, facilitating, make sure everything went really smoothly. I even have some pictures, I believe, of her being in the kitchen doing a little bit of cooking during her time there and actually setting a schedule up for lunch because we had over two hundred and some people there. So Betsy put her school skills to great use and set a schedule up for everybody to eat so we wouldn't have too many people in various areas. So she did a wonderful job. We had a lot of heroes, I think, throughout the county, emergency management, et cetera, during the hurricane. But I thought it was fitting tonight that we recognize Betsy Bridges with the Superintendents' Extra Effort Award. Betsy, please come forward.
Betsy, before you talk, I want to say something. During that time, Andy will talk to me about what's going on, and I will say, you guys are over there all the time. He said, I can't leave them. Betsy's there.
Right.
And I say, okay. Because he feels he has to be there to support what you guys are doing. And I want to say thank you for what you're doing for all of Lee County, not just the parents of the kids, but for Lee County. Thank you very much. Soon as you can speak.
Well, I appreciate it. And I really want to say that I don't think that I did anything more than anybody else if it was at their school because principals, I think, have a special heart for our community to be able to serve our community. When I was asked to open the shelter and told that was going to happen, of course, my heart sank because where I really want to be is at home with my babies, even though they're grown. But I wanted to be there, but then I was glad to be able to be there for our community. And I was there from Wednesday through Saturday. Brought one of my babies that's twenty-two, and she was my... We set up mattresses in my office, and we slept there until Saturday when I did have an overwhelming response from the other principals and staff in Lee County Schools saying, yes, we will come help you. But I did not want anybody to leave their home and come to the shelter as long as we were a hurricane. I told Andy that from the beginning. I said, I'm going to be here as long as it is a hurricane and as long as it is not safe for people to be out on the road. So as soon as they lifted that, I said, okay, I'm tapping out. It's time to go home. And then I slept for fourteen hours. So it was, I feel honored that I was able to do that because I do feel like I was giving back, but I do not feel any more special except for being up here and having a plaque and to say thank you for allowing me to do that for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a picture with you.
Mr. Sheriff, I can as well. I was going to say, you know, I don't know Betsy other than just being the principal at Sandley and being out there and visiting with you and everything, but I can tell you that I've never seen you that you didn't have a smile on your face, and I can't tell you how much that means when kids and families are displaced and when they're afraid. And I can't, I mean, I know all of our people are smiley, happy people, but I tell you, it really means something to have somebody that is a stable point of, you know, touch point that people can recognize and say, if she's here, we're okay. And that's what I got from my friends whose kids go out to Sandley. They said, best place for it is with Betsy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will say that we were talking yesterday when the Governor came and all of us that had worked the shelter were talking, and I said, I feel like my new hat that I also wear was hospitality director because I just wanted to make sure everybody felt okay and they felt safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, we want to say hello to the Sheriff, Tracy Carter. We know his men did extra work here in the community. We want to say thank you to you.
Let's take a picture.
Thank you very much. I'm very swayed at you. I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
All right, now, don't take it when I go sit down, Doc.
I'm telling you, there's something unhooked about this chair. I have a recliner tonight, whether I want it or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have one more point of privilege here. On the agenda tonight, we have an opioid prevention program that's on our consent agenda, and it has come through our committee and also our Board retreat back in August. And I think everybody's received some very favorable information from that. As many of you know, CHAS posed, formed with great foresight, I might add, a task force of a group of people from across Lee County, Hornet, Chatham, that also included Mr. Kelly and Ms. Livingston on that task force. But a gentleman who felt like it was really important that he come and just say a few words about this opioid prevention program tonight, who was going to try to be at CNI Committee with Ms. Livingston and Mr. Cobble, but could not be there, thought it'd be a good opportunity for the Sheriff to come. He wanted to say a few words about it, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak. And, you know, about this problem that we're fighting, if you can say that it's never touched your family, you're blessed. And I've seen firsthand over the years how the pill epidemic has led to the heroin epidemic that we're fighting now. And I think that anything we can do to educate young people about not going down that road of abusing prescription pills, which is where it starts, is a huge step in the right direction. So I think y'all are doing something really good for our youth here. And I've, I know enough about the program. I really believe it's going to be effective. I think young folks are going to listen and learn, and that's the key. So thank you all for what you're doing, and I'm in full support of the program. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sheriff.
The other thing that I'd just like to mention, we are obviously monitoring the weather very closely over the next couple of days with, obviously, our thoughts and prayers with the folks in Florida and also across the southeast as we look at things over the next couple of days. So we'll be monitoring that very, very closely. Finally, with accountability update, our principals have been doing a lot of work with their school improvement plans, working really hard with folks in their schools. And you'll be hearing from Broadway Elementary a little bit later in the agenda. I think Ricky Secor, our principal there, has put together a great plan for Broadway, and they've all been doing a lot of great work. On that note, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. At this time, I will call on the CNI Committee Chair, Ms. Livingston.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. There was a Joint Curriculum and Instructions Committee meeting for the high school and middle school on September the 26th at Lee County High School in the Media Center. This meeting was to hear a report given by Dr. Whitehead, who was with the Department of Psychology at North Carolina State University, along with the graduate interns Elizabeth Adams and Ms. Evans. They presented "This is Not About Drugs." "This is Not About Drugs" is an educational program designed to specifically address the opioid health crisis specifically in Lee County. It is a one-of-a-kind prevention program designed for students grade six through twelve. The goal of the program is to provide an effective lesson for helping raise awareness to the risk of misusing prescription opioids. It stresses how the misuse of prescription opioids can lead to addiction, heroin use, and overdose. Students are encouraged to make good choices and implement alternatives to using substance in dealing with life stresses. "This is Not About Drugs" is an outcomes-driven, science-based, youth opioid misuse prevention program that teaches students how to ask for help and gain support through available information and resources to assist them in making positive decisions about their own body and health. The school district is looking to start a pilot program in a few classrooms and expand the program to reach all middle and high school grade levels. It is the consensus of the middle and high school CNI committees to send the opioid project onto the Board for their approval tonight. And so that's what we're going to do on our consent agenda. This project is very near and dear to my heart because I did lose a daughter to the opioid, and so this is something that I, you know, I'm a champion of and I believe in. And I think that we will move Lee County forward if we can have this program starting, and it'll be a first for North Carolina. So if we can get this program started, then we can be a model for the state as we move forward to combat the opioid crisis. Mr. Chair, the next committee meeting will be tomorrow, October the 10th, 2018, at Sandley Middle School at 3:30. This concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, I will call on the Facility and Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Facilities and Technology Committee met on Tuesday, September the 25th. The first item on our agenda was an Eagle Scout project at Southern Lee High School, and it was the consensus of the committee to approve that project at the school. That item is under the Consent Agenda, Contributions and Donations. Mr. Hart is here if anybody would like to know more about the project. Otherwise, we'll press on with it. We also received a technology update from Rebecca Mezimer. Did I say that right, Lisa? Rebecca? She can't hear me. Rebel Hunter and Dr. Dietrich, and they provided with a district-wide technology update. The next item was a right-of-way offer at East Lee Middle School, and it was the consensus of the committee to approve the right-of-way offer at East Lee Middle School in the amount of $2,000 contingent on the below information. Now, as everybody knows, DOT is putting in a median in that road so that you can't, when you come out of Rice Road, you can't make a left-hand turn. So we accepted this offer of $2,000, provided that DOT can assure us that some provision will be made to allow those school buses to make a left-hand turn, currently to have a little turn lane down towards bypass. But Chris McNeil did not feel like that was adequate to allow our safe school buses to make a left-hand turn. So we approved it based on the assumption that we can work out some kind of acceptable solution to our school buses making a left-hand turn. And that, of course, is on the consent agenda.
Okay.
We got a Hurricane Florence update. Chris McNeil updated the committee on the Hurricane Florence damage across the district. He says the majority of repairs will be covered in the district insurance, and of course, we're also applying for some FEMA proceeds. And as difficult as it was during the hurricane, I was in a meeting yesterday with folks from Onslow County, and they hope, they hope that they can get back to class next Monday. So they've been out a month. And relative to your efforts at making the shelter work, they couldn't use the schools for shelters in Onslow County because none of them were rated for 140 mile an hour winds. So they couldn't even use the schools for shelters, and it's kind of fortunate with all the damage that they had. We also got an update from WB Wicker Elementary School. Superintendent Bryan and Chris McNeil gave a construction progress report. The committee was informed that we already have a change order. Nobody is really excited about change orders, but this one is very legitimate in the amount of $5,185. And I'd like to tell you about it, but I don't know enough about engineering to evaluate it, but Chris McNeil says it's very appropriate that we approve that change order, and we did. Superintendent Bryan also reported that he has started a discussion with Don Kavatchik, who is a comprehensive and strategic planning with the City of Sanford, relative to the redistricting that will have to occur for the opening of WB Wicker School, which will be in August of 2019.
To the data, some survey data we took a look at from the staff through the NC STAR process and just general conversation. We developed a set of goals that we think will help improve our, that we think will certainly be doable and that will indicate improved performance. Our first goal, we made the teacher retention goal. We've had pretty strong retention at the school for the last several years. This past school year, three teachers who started the year with us did not return for this current year, so we were pleased with that. We had a few action steps related to that that we would like to move forward on so that we can continue to have such a strong number. We think it's important that our staff are assigned to roles where they can be most successful, they have a certain level of interest and passion about, and we want to make sure that, you know, we continue to talk with them, what are your goals for yourself, what are things you would like to do, areas that you feel strongly about, so that's, that's one of our strategies. We have an informal system of recognition, but we'd like to develop a more formal system of recognition for various good things that teachers accomplish at the building professionally, academically for themselves, other things of that nature. And another area that we plan to focus on is to continue to identify financial and human resources to help improve our teachers and our students as well. So, staff development trainings and things like that that will be good for them, people with knowledge in the field that are skilled presenters that have something to share, we'd like to help make them available to our staff to help them continue to grow. Our following two goals are related to academics specifically. The school has made growth for three years in a row, and we are glad to have made growth for three years in a row. We would have liked to have seen a stronger number last year, but we are glad we are on the growth side of the number. Some of the information in the plan shows by subject area how the school has done the last three years as far as reading and math are concerned. Our primary area of concern was in the area of math, and on page fourteen of the plan you see the growth index scores that are there. They have declined in the past three years, we recognize that as an area of concern, and so some of our strategies are math in focus because to, to have met state growth with a math growth score that was sixty-four, you know, certainly if we can improve that number, what that can do for the entire school, I think is a very positive thing. An area we wanted to focus in on as far as helping to show growth is improve planning and instruction activities that really get to what is the standard about? What is it that our kids really need to know? What is this standard and all these words saying our kids have to be able to do? And really putting our focus there to say, this is what the state thinks is important. Are we, in what we're doing, really reflecting that? So that is one of our focuses, and so we do believe strongly in Avid, and learning style inventory is a component of that, and that's something we're going to proceed with this year. Differentiate and instruction based on need was the next strategy. We plan to use the accelerated reader program to help track students in reading specifically. With, with part of the plan in strategy three, there are some county resources we want to take full advantage of, teachers around the county who demonstrated strong skills in teaching the particular grade levels, reaching out to them, seeking their input, their guidance, potentially the resources they used to be successful. And a strategy that we developed, and it began over the summer, our vertical planning sessions where we try to get all of our math teachers together, look at areas of concern in the past few years, what have we done that's been successful for kids as they go? What are some areas we can improve on? What do they need to know for the next level that we can get them prepared for? I want our folks to do some more talking, and they've indicated a desire to do that beyond the grade level that they're in. Our final goal was to improve the proficiency levels, which our proficiency levels weren't high enough this year to get us to the level C, and we recognize that. Again, as you look through the data trends that are there on page eighteen, you see the math proficiency level having declined over the past three years in each of the years, reading being somewhat up and down, and then science has done a nice job of continuing to make progress. Each year we were also very pleased with the performance in EL progress that was part of our accountability measure this year, where they were, that number was approximately seventy-five percent of our students making the expected progress in access testing. An area that we really wanted to focus in, in math was fourth grade particularly, that had been, and looking at the data, a place where our students were starting out higher in third grade, struggling in fourth grade, making a small improvement, but not enough in fifth grade. So, we sought out a retired teacher this year to serve as a teacher of record for about twenty of our students. I wish we could have her for more time, but that's what we can have her for. Yeah, she, I think she'll do a great job, and so that was a strategy that we, we focused on. We've had support in science for the last three years, I think our students have shown in going from sixty-one percent to sixty-seven percent, good progress there, and a subject that's only tested one time for them, and that being in fifth grade. And we also have a couple of intervention specialists in reading, one that works primarily with upper grade students and one with more lower grade students. We started last year to build a base of materials to provide support prior to assessments for our teachers, and we look to continue to do that this year. The focus on objectives is, is also, in addition to growth, a key part of showing the, excuse me, sorry about that, it's a key portion of just passing the assessment as well. And we are looking forward this year to being involved in the multi-tiered system of support that's coming. We feel that, you know, by strengthening the core eighty percent that we can offer in addition to providing some solid tier-two and-three strategies that, that will benefit each of our students. The county has been very helpful in the past month, I'd like to thank Dr. Shuey for all she's done to help me, this has been very new to me, I've participated on school improvement teams before, but this is a much more in-depth process with what we've experienced, and Dr. Chaplin, appreciate your support as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as best I can tonight.
Do you, okay, go ahead.
I was just going to clarify one thing with the EL progress.
Yes, sir.
That was grades three through five, right?
Three through, yes, sir.
Do you remember what the raw number was?
Approximately fifty of sixty-six.
That's right, okay, just wanted to make sure, and that was new this year.
Yes, sir.
My question is, do you think what you guys are putting in place will be adequate for, to move the school from a D up to a B or C?
I believe this year it's certainly reasonable to think that it will be, we'd be able to get to a C. A D to a C for us is not, we were one point short, so when you're one point short, everything's really important. And so, I do think certainly we can, we can expect to be able to do that. A B is a bigger climb for us, certainly, when we're looking at thirty-nine percent in math, that's a, that's a lot to, to go up. I, I don't want to say it's not possible, I would never say that. I would say certainly a C, and we're hopeful about a B.
I'm a realistic person too, so I know what you call it, what it is. Shannon, you know, you guys and John, you have to keep working with them because we don't want to have a, a D school anymore.
Absolutely not, we share that valuable with all of you.
It's not, it's not acceptable by the board.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Chaplin would have been here tonight, but she had a family issue to take care of. Dr. Chaplin's been working very closely with Mr. Secor as well.
And we know you are, you can do, you can do the job, that's why we put you there, so.
Thank you.
Make sure that we move that number up. Shannon, can we count on that? Okay, that's all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have not so much a question as, as an observation. With all due respects to the school performance grades, it's my personal opinion that no school who makes growth should be considered a failing school. And that's going to be in the plan of action for the North Carolina School Board Association as we approach the legislature and hope that they will at least put that into, into this scenario. And I think your school made growth, and I'm certainly proud of that. I think we can all take pride in that.
Thank you.
And, and that's important, making growth is very important.
Well, there's more to a school than a, than a number, and personal privilege, I go to Broadway Alliance, I have a niece that is always there, and I'm a learner's of Broadway, and again, the feeling that you get when you go into Broadway School is more than a number. It's, you know, a number defines us, and we use led it to label us, but again, it's really what takes place in the classroom, and growth can't be measured sometimes what a student learns.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, don't let, don't let this seem as a, as a knockdown, don't let it be seen as a, as a failure, because it's not.
Thank you.
Dr. Kubo.
I, I have one thing. One, you've got an excellent place to start from, you're going up. But two, what's your, can you give me an idea of the retention rates for math teachers?
The retention as far as turnover?
How, how does the retention rate between math teachers at Broadway compare to others?
I'm really not certain. We did make one change that we felt was necessary last year in January. We didn't quite get to where we had hoped to as a result of that by the end of the year. That change is in place, we have, have made that, that change, and that is, as of right now, that's, that's the one that we have made.
Long-term, past three years?
I don't believe that it would be anything significantly higher than anyone else. Just as, you know, as I was saying earlier with the, the three-year data trend, tenure or turnovers pretty low across the school. This past school year was about three, and I think the summer that I came on, it was maybe four or five, so it's not a very significantly high number in, in recent memory.
If I'm correct, one of those teachers actually left Broadway and went to Tremway because she wanted to, there was something, they wanted to try it year-round, so I mean, it's not like they're leaving and, and going to other places because they absolutely hated Broadway, want to stay within the school system and just transferred to Tremway, so.
What is the percentage of your ESL?
It's, it's roughly twenty-two percent each year, it's generally around that number. We have about five hundred and ninety students this year, and I think the number is, is about a hundred and thirty-one if you include the pre-K.
How full?
And thank you for your support of the pre-K.
You're welcome.
We do appreciate that, it's been great for us, thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably at what capacity when it comes to being full? Is it, it's not full, but it's, is it close to the capacity?
We have about five hundred and seventy-five students in the K-5. We have three mobile units that are used throughout the day, and we've tried to put each core class into the main building as much as we can. We have about four or five groups of students that would be out in the trailers over the course of the day for reading intervention and EL services.
If we have no further question, we just want to tell you and, and the group and, and Mr. Conway and Dr. Shuey and yourself that we're cheering for you, we know you can do it, and we're going to be celebrating next year when this time rolled around, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can, and Mr. Conway will correct me if I need to on this, we, we will have to have a special call meeting within the thirty-day time period, which I think is around November eighth, I believe. If there's no, if there's no objection from anybody just to approve this plan, that'd be the only subject for the meeting, and then we can move forward to the state. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Conway?
Yes, okay, we, I was waiting for the motion, so we'll just have a call meeting later.
And that, and that's because of the, that's.
What time do you want it to be? Do you have a date?
We can, we can do it at five o'clock if everybody's okay with that. And that's for, those, that's the outline of, that's the timeframe as outlined by the state.
Okay, do you have a date in mind so that we can do that?
November eighth, I believe it's a Thursday.
November eighth, okay. So, November eighth.
And will that be here located at the Heinz Building?
Probably be easier to do it at the Heinz Building.
Okay. Thank you. So we need a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we have a call meeting on November eighth at five PM at the Heinz Building.
Okay, we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, oh, never mind, jumping gun, don't mind me, clicked the wrong button.
And we still have, what do you call it, we need a motion too for, to approve the plan now.
That's, that's what I was looking for, I clicked on the, I moved the Lee County Board of Education to approve the school improvement plan for Broadway Elementary School.
I think we approved it after the thirty days.
No, we approve it now for it to go before the public, and then we have to approve it to go to the state.
Yes.
It's a three-step.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Secor.
So what?
Thank you all. Mr. Chairman, since he's already up here, the Beginning Teacher Support Program for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, Mr. Conway?
I'm going to pass this one off again. Patricia Cauldron is our Beginning Teacher Support Coordinator, and if you don't know it already, she's the best in the state. She has developed a program that we are very proud of. Her plan, our plan, has to be approved on a yearly basis, you, you hear it every year about this time, so at this time I'll, I'll turn it over to Patricia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As I said, each year we have to approve our BT plan, we have to send it to the state then. It's already been pre-approved by the state, but now I have to bring it to you and get your approval. And I just want to point out a few things that we cover in our BT support plan. We have a five-day new teacher academy that we hold at the beginning of the school year. That is for all new hires, but specifically for our teachers in their first, second, and third year. We provide new hire training throughout the year, and that includes growth sessions for our teachers that are differentiated based on their experience levels, but also for our year-two and year-three teachers, we differentiate based on interest and need, trying to make sure that we're responsive to what they ask for as teachers, and that we're meeting their needs in the classroom and in the schools. We have an evaluation process for our initial licensed teachers, we have that within our plan. We also provide a plan for participating in the state audit, and this will actually be our, our year to participate in the state audit in December, they'll be coming to audit how we're doing with keeping our records and supporting our beginning teachers. And we've already had several meetings about that, so we're, we're prepared to, to share with them everything that we're doing. We work really hard, our staff works really hard to make sure that our BTs not only feel supported, but feel like they're part of the Lee County family, and that we retain them, but that we not only retain them, but that we grow them. And our plan is designed to help make that happen, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have a very brief comment, and that is that, I don't know if you realize it or not, but we as a board receive every announcement that you send out to the teachers for professional development, and I will just say that the, the flyers, the excitement that is shown in them, I want to come to like every one of these things, and so I was just going to say from that standpoint, me with a communication background, just having that kind of excited, you know, it looks like a party invitation, come out and join us, you know, and I was just going to comment on that, that you're making it fun.
Thank you.
And, and let's just be honest, not every day in a classroom is fun, but that, you know, we can, we're all doing something that's worthwhile. And so anyway, that was my little comment, as I read these things, and I go dang, you sound fun, now I want to go, so never, you never know when I might just drop in.
We'll be glad to have you. One of the things we do try to make sure we do is celebrate them as teachers and the progress they've made and what they do for our students.
And just want to thank you for, for that, every career, every profession, just like a beginning teacher need a mentor, whether you are a doctor, lawyer, or engineer, you need someone to mentor you, and that mentorship or mentoring, whatever it is, is what keep you in the career path. If you didn't have a good person to help you settle down on that job, you have a few bad days, you just say, hey, I'll just pack up and let them know, I'm not made for this kind of job, so thank you for what you're doing, and if anything we can do as a board, let us know.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you as well for what you're doing to help all the beginning teachers and those who are first and second year and third year to move forward and, and create a better classroom environment, thank you again.
Thank you.
Patricia, Mr. Conway kind of indicated that your program is a class act, what are you doing different to bring attention, attention from the state level?
Well, I, at our regional meetings, we were able to just kind of showcase what we're doing within our district, and I make sure that our regional and all our DPI representatives also receive a copy of everything that we do, I include them on that, so they, they know exactly what's happening in our district. We invite them to come, and, and they, as of yet have not come, but we invite them to everything, including our share fair at the end of the year, which is a huge thing for our teachers to be able to share with each other, so hopefully they'll make it one day.
So obviously they're impressed, and if they are, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the Beginning Teacher Support Program two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Thank you.
At this time, we will need a, a motion to go into closed session.
We have one more.
Calendar.
Traditional calendars.
Oh, the calendar, I was moving ahead of myself.
We can't leave off the calendar change.
It's all right.
It might be preemptive though.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you very much for having us. Ms. Spence and I come before you today to let you know that as a result of Hurricane Florence and the days missed, which I must say that I am very, there are other people in this county and in, or excuse me, across the state that did not quite, they're still not in school, I believe, some of those counties, so I'm very fortunate that we were able to come back to school when we did. As a result of missing all that time, that we would like to make a recommendation that October twenty-sixth and February fifteenth are removed as half-days and become full instructional day, therefore bringing back six hours of instructional time. One thing I would also like to note is that the, there has been legislation out there to waive days for folks who miss a certain number, but it is still important to remember that instructional time is the most important thing we have with these kids, so we should take every opportunity to, to get back what we can, and these are the two half-days that we recommend to get back some of the time that we have missed to make sure our kids get it back.
You know, even if the state say they want to waive it, they're still going to ask for our student to do testing, so the test is not waived.
Correct.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, since this is still open for discussion, if you don't mind, I would like to give my opinion on this. Considering the state, and I understand that the law says that they can waive it, my concerns is that we have, and we just got through talking about growth and how important it is, we missed our target growth for the last four years at Lee County High School. At Southern Lee High School, we've only met our growth once in the last four years. Now, looking at the records and the documentation here, we've missed thirty-three hours of instructional time. For me, just my personal opinion is, I do not believe that six hours of makeup is enough for our children in our county. I spent the entire summer feeding with the backpack kids, and I got to know them very well, and in their homes, and you'd be surprised, they don't, some of them don't even eat unless they're in school. This education is so important, especially with our vital in our youth, and we already have one school that has to do an improvement plan. So, for, looking at all that, even though the state comes back and the state does says, hey, we forgive you, I understand that clearly, but I think as a school board, that we should do everything possible, even being forgiven of that time, to restore that time. There are other counties like Brunswick County who has modified their schedules as, as well, and you know a lot of counties we hit a lot worse. And I went through all the doctoral studies that I could find in reference to growth, meeting targeted growth and performance, and if you're not in school, you can't exactly learn, particularly with the students that we have, so, and they've done things where they do, and I'm just wondering if y'all have thought about doing anything about where they do things online, we actually had a teacher that did a Skype class in situations like that, plus we also have the winter coming up as well, but six hours for thirty-three hour, thirty-three hours of instructional time, and I, and I probably had my math wrong, so please forgive me, when I looked at the half-days, I took it as five point five days because you got recess and break and lunch, whatever going on there. So, that's just my personal opinion, I'm just one board member, but I think that unless we can absolutely say that we have demonstrated everything reasonably possible to make up that time, I would suggest that we look at adding some more time for our students, sir.
I believe that we may have that opportunity, especially with another storm coming this week and more weather possible down the road, I think for now that these two half-days is the first step towards gaining back time with reserving the right that more time may come later on, that we would need to add back.
If I may add, we, we were, we were trying to get this to the board now because the half-day is in October, so we wanted to go ahead and take care of the half-days now, knowing that there'll probably be an opportunity where we have to put more time on the school day and make up more time for.
And that's the feedback I had heard from teachers is that, you know, if we can protect breaks and add time to days, they'd rather do that than to give up spring break or fall break or whatever break. And because they already had workdays and the half-days weren't anything lost, you know, for those who opted to come and work on those days. But again, we have Michael standing at the doorstep, and he may come requesting extra time next week, so.
And as, and as we've mentioned earlier, there is still the winter to come, and our last couple winters have not been exactly friendly to us.
And the Farmer's Almanac doesn't give us much hope if, if you're one of those.
So I think that that is a discussion we are more than happy to have, we were just trying to get it in for the October half-day at the moment.
At this time, we need a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the changes as presented.
Second.
A motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Change approved.
Mark, I respectfully say nay.
Okay. Okay. So we have one nay. So it's, it's noted, thank you. At this time, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Have one point. I think that, you know, we, we as a board don't always see what goes on with the principals in all the different schools, and I really appreciate the work that Mr. Secor did on the school improvement plan, but I know that a lot of our principals have had to shore up a lot of things over the year, and they're the ones we depend on. You're, you're the sergeants in the line, and I would just like to say thank you to all the principals that we have in Lee County, because they've done a wonderful job.
I say amen to that.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we go into closed session for the purpose to discuss information that is privileged, confidential, and not public record under North Carolina General Section one forty-three through eighteen dot eleven A, hence a consult with our attorney to reserve attorney-client privilege between our Attorney Board of Education under North Carolina General Section one forty-three through eighteen dot eleven A three.
Thank you, we.
Second.
So we go into a closed session, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session. I like, I like a motion to come out of a closed session meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we resume open session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are out of a closed session.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve our personnel report as presented in closed session.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make the most important motion of all, motion adjourned.
We adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.